First off, thank you all very much for arriving early and helping with our check-in process. And the town clerk tells me it went fairly smoothly, and I hope you thought the same. So the meeting will come to order. As most of you know, I'm your town moderator, Bob His. Welcome to this special winter town meeting. Is my audio coming through okay? Very good. Having been advised by our town clerk, Susan Galvin, that a majority of town meeting members are in attendance, I hereby declare that a quorum is present for the transaction of business, and this meeting is now open. In keeping with our tradition, we'll start our meeting with the pledge of allegiance to the flag. Would the membership please stand and join me? Thank you very much. Before proceeding with the business of the meeting, however, there are certain preliminary matters to be taken up. First, permission has been requested for certain members and personnel of the school committee, planning board, board of health, and other boards, committees, and departments who are not town meeting members to sit on the floor with other members of their respective boards, committees, and departments, upon the understanding, of course, that they will not vote. Hearing no objection from the body, such permission will be and hereby is accorded. Second, permission is granted to Milton Cable Access TV to televise these proceedings. Also, please note that there are two side aisle microphones, one here and one over here, each with seats in the front row, reserved for those wishing to be recognized to speak. So if you'd like to be recognized to speak, if you could speak and sit in these front rows, and you will catch my eye that way. Third, I now entertain a motion to continue to use the rules for the conduct of our annual town meeting in May as the rules for this meeting. Is there a second? All in favor say aye. Opposed, no. Very good. The motion carries. By the way, we have no articles tonight that require a two-thirds vote. They are all going to be majority votes. I have one announcement from Mr. Tim Jawinski, the town planner. In 2021, Governor Baker signed legislation requiring all towns with MBTA service to draft multifamily zoning near transit stations. The Department of Planning and Community Development will be hosting a public forum on the MBTA community's multifamily zoning requirement at 7:00 PM this Thursday, February 16. The meeting will be held remotely via Zoom and will include information on the state's compliance guidelines, steps the town is taking to analyze options for compliance, and opportunities to provide feedback. You can find information for how to join the meeting on the planning and community development page on the town's website or on the flyers that are posted at the back of the auditorium. Now, I'd just like to make a comment on a few words on decorum. Ladies and gentlemen, a town meeting, and I've chosen those words carefully, ladies and gentlemen, some definitions in support of those I found in the Oxford English Dictionary. A lady is a woman who is polite and well-educated, has excellent manners, and always behaves well. A gentleman is a man who is polite and well-educated, who has excellent manners, and always behaves well. In my years as town moderator, I found that the members of this body acting in town meeting have always behaved as ladies and gentlemen. You are polite to your fellow town meeting members, you always behave well, you show respect to your fellow members in both your words and decorum. Even when emotions run a little high on a topic, I have found your behavior to be exemplary, and I'm proud to be associated with you as we represent our fellow citizens. They deserve our best, and you demonstrate it consistently. Last week at a school committee meeting, I saw a video of some behavior from a very few citizens that was less than well-mannered and demonstrated behavior that was less than the standard of ladies and gentlemen. Those few citizens were shouting from the back of the room, interrupting school committee members, and interrupting a citizen trying to speak to the school committee. If the school committee would indulge me for a moment, I'd ask you to stand up and be recognized, if you wouldn't mind, the school, the elected school committee members, please. So, Town of Milton, the women standing before you are our daughters, our sisters, our wives, our mothers, and grandmothers. They have volunteered a considerable amount of their time with no remuneration for many years on all our behalf, and have been selected by a majority of the voters to represent your interests in our school system. Over the past few weeks, they tried something new, which per the specific duties of their office, they were under no obligation to try. They expanded the concept of citizen speak to one of dialogue between citizens in the school committee. Give and take, back and forth, on four separate nights, if memory serves, all with the purpose of hearing questions and comments from the citizens and patiently answering them as best as possible. To my mind, this is one of the best examples of something I consider one of humanity's greatest inventions, which is actually politics. Politics is how we determine policy in our government. Politics allows us to reach a consensus and a decision without violence, but instead through dialogue, which is why I admire the school committee for engaging in policy dialogue through their four information sessions. They were helping us to reach some policy decisions as represented in the school budget, before it comes before the warrant committee and this town meeting next May. However, it has been my experience that this policy dialogue needs to follow some simple rules for it to be effective. Wait your turn, avoid interruptions, listen to the other speaker, remain calm, as perhaps we have all said to our children at one point or another, and I know my wife and I did, use your words. So, thank you, school committee members, for your service to our town. And so while I have no doubt at all that the behavior of you, ladies and gentlemen, will fully conform to the meaning of those titles during this and future town meetings, I ask that when we conclude our business and we return to our role as citizens in the next public forum, we all carry that spirit as ladies and gentlemen with us and continue to set a positive example for all of our citizens to follow. Thank you. I'd now like to recognize Chair Arthur Doyle of the Select Board.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Last time, I didn't check that first, and then I had to use that trite expression, "Can you hear me now?" And it's nice not to have to do that again. The Select Board joins with our moderator in his comments of this evening at the opening of this very important meeting. We ask and we expect that all of our board and committee meetings be held in a constructive, collaborative fashion. Our meetings are meant to be places where we can gather together and engage in a democratic process. No one should feel unwelcome or be reluctant to share their opinion because of how others might react, or be made to feel fearful for expressing their position in a public forum. This evening, at its meeting, the Select Board adopted the following, which we will read for incorporation into its policies. No person shall address a meeting of the Select Board without permission of the Chair of the Select Board, and all persons shall, at the Chair's request, be silent. No person shall disrupt the proceedings of a Select Board meeting. If anyone does, and after clear warning from the Chair, any person continues to disrupt the proceedings, the Chair may order the person to withdraw from the meeting. And if the person does not withdraw, the Chair may authorize a constable or other officer to remove the person from the meeting. And this was adopted consistent with Massachusetts general laws and in consultation with town council. It'll be read again on our meeting of the 21st, and at that meeting, we will also move to develop a statement that will generically apply to all meetings. The one that I have just expressed to you is exclusive to the Select Board meetings. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Drew.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Now, as you no doubt have discovered when you checked in tonight, we are running a live test of in-person electronic voting, which was approved for use at our June 2022 annual town meeting by you. Our electronic voting committee, consisting of myself, Town IT Director Rob Mallett, who's sitting back here, and Town Meeting Member Jill Clark, thanking Ms. Clark, interviewed and selected Turning Point Technologies among the three leading vendors serving towns in the Commonwealth. Before purchasing the technology, however, we thought it best to run a demo for you, and so have worked with Turning Point to bring you their devices and software so we can vote on tonight's articles using electronic voting. You may notice that the Turning Point staff, Jessica and Sunell, sitting at the table to my left, are running the software that will present the question, collect the votes, tabulate the results, and display them. The process is simple. At the conclusion of an article's discussion, instead of calling for a voice vote, I'll call for an electronic vote, very similar to what we did during Zoom when we had remote meetings. All those in favor of the motion on the floor will press the one button on your device. All those opposed to the motion on the floor will press the two button, and all those abstaining, please press nothing. I think the software may be coming up. You may see what it looks like. You can, I'll wait 30 seconds for voting, and you can change, no need to vote yet, you can change your vote during the 30-second voting period. So we'll open it for 30 seconds, one for yes, two for no, you can change your vote. If you want to abstain, say nothing. Vote, press nothing. When I call for closing the vote, our team will turn off the vote data collection and present the results on the screen. I'll read aloud both the percent and the numerical vote count so that the town clerk can record them for the record. By the way, tonight, at the end of the meeting, if you would just drop your little clicker off with the town clerk's staff, because we don't own them yet, and we don't want to pay for those that we haven't purchased yet, nor have the constables track you down. We will run a test vote before the official vote on Article One. Are there any questions about our electronic voting? If you have a question, perhaps, can you make it to the mic or, no? Because it records the last thing you pressed. So when 30 seconds happens, whatever you press last is your vote. Yes, sir. Yes, a couple ways. We'll have a record, one, we know you're here or you're not, so we know which members didn't attend. Second, we will absolutely have your vote recorded in a file, so we'll know that. And I think, team, we played with how to display it on the screen. It's really busy. Imagine flashing through over 200 names, and there's other technologies. It's so busy, we thought that if there's any question, you could, before I count the vote, you could just ask, and we can have the staff confirm that you were recorded. Any other questions? Yes, sir, in the back. This eliminates the need for both now. Because in a roll call vote, as you know, what a standing vote means someone's challenging the voice opinion of the moderator, that's eliminated because we now know exactly what you members voted on. Second, it eliminates quorum calls, because we'll know if we have 145 members here or not. You'll see it in the votes. And we can, we know how many came in. We had 174 check in tonight. We know that. And when you, when you leave, we'll know how many have left. We'll remove them from the system. We're only looking at yeses and nos. You can still abstain, just like a voice vote, and your vote will be excluded from the denominator. We looked at that, but when you see the total, the system ends up including the abstains as a percentage, which is contrary to our tradition of only having the yeses and nos count. So this way, if you, if you vote yes or no, your vote will be counted. The total of those will end up in the denominator. We'll then divide the yeses by the denominator and know if we hit 50% or two-thirds. If an abstain is in there, it'll muddy that water up. Because we'll, one, your device, I believe, will light up when it works. And when it lights up, you'll know that the system communicated, and these have been tested out, all to operate within the confines of the auditorium here. So we'll know we have your, your vote if you see that color go. And if you would like, to be assured, we could do on the test vote if you would like. We could show you the different ways we could display the names, but imagine we're gonna have to scroll through a lot of names to show it to you. Yes, sir, and then ma'am. Yes? Oh, is that ma'am again? Sorry. My plan is, when we get to the annual town meeting, if they are very simple, non-controversial, I'm allowed the latitude per the way you voted on the town, the electronic voting article, to make a judgment call. So I think in the interest of time, just like I did on should we adopt the annual town meeting rules in this meeting, I'll just call for a voice vote. If it's pretty clear, it's going to be a unanimous support. And if I think there's any kind of controversy, or even there's going to be substantial opposition or balance, I'll just go to an electronic vote right away, because it's 30 seconds. My plan, it would be, just like every other board and committee, you see a public record, that tomorrow we'll be able to put up these results on the town meeting page, and the citizens can see how we all voted. I see no other questions. Oh, sorry. Yes, Ms. Oden. Yes? I'll check with our team. I believe that's correct, right? Once you voted, you can't abstain? Right. So, yes. So once you press a button, we'll record the last thing you pressed. If you're not sure you want to vote, just press nothing. Like I can't unhear your voice, so to speak, in a voice vote. I don't see any other hands. I see hands in the back in the citizen section, or is that the town meeting member back there? Hi, sorry. No, we'd record like a roll call. We would record yes and no, or abstain by town meeting member in the public record, right? Just like the Select Board, or the school committee, or planning board. You know how they vote. Any others? Yes, sorry. Once we purchase it, I believe round numbers, it's a one-time purchase of less than 15,000, I think. We'll check the quote. After that, it's the labor of having people and the staff checking in, and the IT staff that would replace the work that Jessica and Sunell are doing. So I think we estimated 500 or 1,000 bucks for a town meeting, I think in variable cost. These are all the numbers I laid out a year ago when we went through the presentation. Yes, sir? They, since we went into the bylaws, and the bylaws supersede those rules I listed, and the bylaw said that upon, when a town, electronic voting is available, then the town moderator can implement it. So under that language, we'll implement it on the votes tonight. Am I missing any other hands? I don't think I see any other hands. All right, you want to try a vote? Okay. All in favor of the motion, which reads, "Tonight is a good night for town meeting. Please signify by pressing yes. All opposed, press no. All wishing to abstain, press nothing." And we'll put up the timer, please. Okay, we can close the poll. So I declare that the motion passes with a positive vote of 78% yeses and 22% nos. We can also then display the actual numerical count for you for the clerk's record. With 145 yeses and 41 nos. And that comes to obviously 186, which is also quorum, because it exceeds our 145. And we had a few more people check in since we started at 7:30. Everybody ready? Welcome to the future. With that, if we could go back to the warrant, if you would now turn to your Article One in Page Six of your warrant. Recommended that the town vote to accept the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter 48, Section 110A. And with that, I'd like to recognize Chair Arthur Doyle of the Select Board. Mr. Doyle, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Arthur Doyle, Select Board Chair, Precinct Seven member. At this time, we would like to call Susan Galvin, Town Clerk, for this article. Mr. Moderator.
Very good. Madam Clerk, you're recognized.
Can you see me above the podium? I feel extremely short right now. So, the purpose of this article is to adopt Mass General Law, Chapter 41, Section 110A. What it would provide us with is that it would give me or my department the option to not be open on a Saturday for voter registration. Currently, the Votes Act gave us permission to, didn't give us permission, I'm sorry, changed the voter registration from 10 days, from 20 days to 10 days, and all of our town elections currently fall on a Tuesday, and if you count backwards, it always would be on a Saturday. If we don't adopt this, my office would be required to be open from 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM every Saturday that, before an election. By adopting it, we would be able to be open until 5:00 PM on a Friday, thus saving the town the additional expense of having my office open on that Saturday. Voter registration has become very easy for folks. On average, currently, in the last three elections, we've had two people come in and vote on the actual last day to register to vote. The other two elections, we had nobody. So fiscally, I think it would be the responsible thing for us to do, to adopt that. I do not believe we would be disenfranchising any voters. They have the option to vote or register to vote online up until midnight on that Saturday if by chance they missed coming in on that Friday. And it's only an option, so if, in fact, it was not something that the residents agree to or find unsatisfactory, then we don't have to do it, but it just gives us something additional in our two bucks. That's it.
Does anyone wish to speak to this article? Please make your way down to the front seats. And I assume, ma'am, sir, you don't want to speak, Ms. Denny, or Ms. Ross Denny, or Mr. Tracus, you don't want to speak to this one? No? Okay. Yes, Mr. Walker, you're recognized.
Leroy Walker, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 10. Just a question on the impact. So, does this have the impact of reducing the number of available days from 10 to nine, or is it still 10 days? Thank you.
Ms. Galvin?
So I may need town council to correct me if I'm wrong. However, the way the Votes Act is written, it, if, if we adopt this, the ninth, it's technically nine days, but it allows us, it counts as 10 days. I know it's not the legal terminology. And I'm sure that town council can give us a better legal analysis than what I just gave.
Mr. Freytag, do you perhaps clarify?
I think the answer to the question is it just, it pushes it back one day. So now you'll have to, the Voting Act says that you can register up to 10 days before. This will mean that residents in Milton will have up to 11 days before when they can register. It won't, it won't shorten the number of days. I suppose if you're looking at it in that perspective, it'll just push it back one day, so it'll be Friday instead of the Saturday. That makes sense?
Any other questions, or anyone else wish to speak to this article? Seeing none, we'll proceed to the electronic vote. If we could switch on the voting screen. All those in favor of the recommended recommendation, please signify by pressing one. Those opposed, press two. And those abstaining, press nothing. If we could turn on the counter? If we can close the poll, thank you. The motion carries with 96% yes and 4% no. If we could flip to the count as well. With 179 yeses and eight nos. Thank you very much, folks. Your first official in-person electronic vote. Well done. Article Two. If we could flip back to the warrant, there we go. Recommended that the town vote to change the office of the Town Treasurer Collector of Taxes from a position elected under Mass General Law, Section 41, Number 1, to an appointed office pursuant to MGL 411B, with the appointing authority for such office to be the town administrator pursuant to Chapter 65 of the Acts of 2016, as amended, provided that the appointed treasurer collector of taxes shall have professional qualifications, background, and experience commensurate with the town's scope and responsibilities for treasury collections and operations, cash management, investment management, bonding, debt service management, and financial forecasting. And provided further that such change in the office of Town Treasurer Collector of Taxes shall be subject to acceptance by the voters of the town of the following question to be placed on the official ballot for an annual town election. Shall the town vote to have its elected treasurer collector of taxes become an appointed treasurer collector of taxes of the town with a yes or a no vote? This will be a majority vote. It's submitted by the Select Board. With that, I'd like to recognize Chair Arthur Doyle of the Select Board. Mr. Doyle?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Arthur Doyle, Select Board Chair, Member, Precinct Seven. At this time, Mr. Moderator, I would request the recognition of the following three individuals. Rick Neely, and he has been past Chair of the Select Board, the School Committee, the Warrant Committee, and the Town Government Study Committee. Nicholas Milano, our Town Administrator, and Leroy Walker, past Chair of the School Committee and former member of the Warrant Committee, and a former member of the Town Government Study Committee.
Thank you, sir. I'll recognize those gentlemen in order. Mr. Neely, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Thank you, Chairman Doyle. Rick Neely, Town E. Member, Precinct Three, former chairman of the Town Government Study Committee. So as background, Town Government Study Committee was established some 10 years ago, and it had nine members. We had some additional members that served over the years, so probably about 15 people all told served. And you saw at the last town meeting, we were, it was nice to be recognized for the service over the last 10 years. The purpose of the committee back some 10 years ago was to review and make recommendations to the town meeting and to the town for improvements in the governance and management of the town. town. The committee enlisted the assistance of the Commonwealth Massachusetts Department of Revenue Municipal Services Bureau to provide services and recommendations to us for outlining the experiences and best practices across the Commonwealth. One of those recommendations was to look at the financial management and noted that one of the best practices would be to eliminate the decentralization and fragmentation that Milton has for its financial management. One of the two ways, and one of the ways to address that has been to consider changing from the elected treasurer to the appointed treasurer. And the reason for them to do that is to make it part of the financial management team. So that is one of the reasons, that's the reason you're considering this article tonight, and it would be for the voters afterwards. We have a detailed PowerPoint presentation that Nick and Leroy are going to present, but the Town Government Study Committee was unanimous in supporting this over the years, and we recommend it for your approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Neely. Mr. Milano, you're recognized. And if we could put up the presentation for Article 2, please.
Good evening. Good to see you all. Thank you for having me. I'm Nicholas Milano. I am the Town Administrator. So I'll provide some background on Article 2, what the possible outcomes are, what's going on in other municipalities, and a little bit of information about the town's current structure. So, Karen, yep, Article 2, so Chapter 41, Section 1B of the Massachusetts General Laws provides for a process for communities to transition from elected officials to appointed officials, in this case, the Treasurer Collector. So there are two steps required. The first, which we're here for tonight, is a vote of the town meeting at least 60 days before the annual town election. The second step is a town-wide ballot question on the town election in April. So there are three possible outcomes. First, the town meeting could vote not to approve the article tonight, in which case there will be no ballot question in April. Second, town meeting could vote to approve it, and the question could be approved on the town election ballot in April, in which case whoever is elected Treasurer in that election shall serve until a permanent appointment is made by the appointing authority, in which case it would be the Town Administrator, similar to how it is set up for other department heads in the town. The third possible outcome is that town meeting could approve it tonight, but the question might not pass on the ballot in April, in which case the candidate that's elected Treasurer shall serve a full term. And that is the outcome that has happened here in Milton before, when it was approved by town meeting but failed on the ballot. In terms of municipal trends, so some information from the Massachusetts Division of Local Services shows us that of the 351 cities and towns in Massachusetts, 47 of them have elected Treasurers, which means that 87% have appointed. Municipalities with a population of greater than 10,000, 15 of 180 have elected Treasurers, which means that 92% do have appointed. And the next slide shows this in a little bit of... Oh, I'm sorry. This is the trends as to what is going on with those 15. So 15 communities with a population over 10,000, a little bit larger, from Chickopee down to Dudley, a couple of cities in there. Holyoke, Milton, Belmont, and Ludlow, as well as Westwood, have been taking action on this issue, each of them seeking to look at converting their position of elected Treasurer to appointed. It passed in Belmont last week. It passed in Ludlow earlier this year. It will go to town meeting in Westwood in May. And as you know, we're here tonight to consider this discussion, just to show you as to where those trends continue to move across Massachusetts. And this slide is just a graphical form of appointed versus treasurer across the state. Thank you to Mr. Fundling from the Warrant Committee for lending us the graph, the graphical image, rather. Next slide is, this is our current organizational chart, just to show how this structure is set up currently. Voters certainly elect the Treasurer Collector today. They elect the Select Board. The Select Board is my appointing authority, and then the Town Administrator appoints the Town Accountant/Finance Director presently. And then if this, both steps of this were adopted, you'd see here how that would set up in terms of the voters obviously still electing the Select Board, the Select Board still appointing the Town Administrator, who then is the appointing authority for the Treasurer Collector, as well as the Town Accountant/Finance Director, which speaks to Mr. Neely's point about centralization and forming that financial team here in Milton. That's where I conclude, and Mr. Walker will take over to lead us through the conclusion of the presentation. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Milano. Mr. Walker, you're recognized.
Leroy Walker, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 10. It is not usually the case that one gets to deliver a presentation that was first delivered four and a half years ago, but here we are with the benefit of additional perspective and information, so that's the good news. Next slide. As Rick and Nick have indicated, this was a three-year effort, and the approach that the committee took was to look at other municipality financial management structures, to interview other municipality officials, and then finally to talk with the stakeholders here in our own town. Next slide. We looked at a number of different communities. These are communities that are comparators for Milton in any number of ways. When we do collective bargaining planning for the schools, we look at some of these communities. When we think about best practices in other areas, we look at some of these communities. So the idea was to cast as broad a net as possible in trying to get information about where we should go next. So 23 municipalities were included in that group, and you see them on this slide. Next slide. So as you heard Nick say, the numbers have changed. So in this slide, four and a half years ago, you can see that the numbers were 79% and 90%. And as you've just heard Nick say, they are now, 87% of the municipalities have appointed Treasurers. And the larger municipality, and the larger the budget therefore, the more likely that body will have, or that city will have a, an elected, I'm sorry, appointed Treasurer. So specifically, if you look at communities with budgets between $50 and $200 million, the number is now 92%. So what did we conclude from these interviews? Next slide. One was that there's a critical need for, as you heard from Rick, centralization, but also someone who plays a lead finance role. And we now have the benefit of both talent and experience in our Finance Director, Amy Dexter, but the idea would be to add to the talent and expertise by creating an appointed Treasurer position where we can recruit someone with experience and qualifications. Not usually the case if you have an elected position. The trend toward appointed Treasurers continued, and this information is dated. As you saw from Nick, there are numerous communities now, I think the list was 15, that are now considering this possibility. You might not be surprised to hear that in the three years that we looked at this, we did not find one instance where some community went from an appointed position to an elected position. No surprise there, but that was something that we took a look at. Next slide. So what did we conclude from these interviews? That the successful recruitment of an experienced CFO or Treasurer would be unlikely if the Treasury function was separate from a consolidated financial management structure. The idea being that this individual would want to be a part of a team and would want to have all of the characteristic Treasury functions as part of their scope of responsibility. Second, that a consolidated financial management structure would enhance cross-training and career advancement opportunities for staff. That may seem like a small thing, but it's actually pretty important in a municipality like Milton with an organization structure that's as small as ours is. So the idea is that if you bring that Treasury function into the umbrella of the other financial management team, then you both have the benefit of being able to train people for other roles, which creates some redundancy, which is always a good thing, and you give them the opportunity potentially to advance with a greater number of opportunities. Next slide. And then we talked with stakeholders, and I want to talk about this, but then I want you to look at the list of stakeholders, which I'll show you in just a minute. But these were key individuals within our town who play various roles in which they helped lead us through all of the challenges that we're prepared to meet, some of them financial, some of them political, and some of them management-related. But we thought, again, we ought to cast a broad net in terms of who we talked to about this possibility because all of those opinions are important. So what we heard from them, if we went to an appointed Treasurer structure, increased cooperation, the likelihood is that there would be more cooperation there when you have someone who's, again, part of a larger financial management team. And that isn't to say that there wasn't cooperation, but it is to say that that's a decision that an independent Treasurer was able to make or not make. Improved coordination. This is really important because the thought was there would be more and better financial planning, short-term, faster and more robust response to audit responses. And if you're really looking to delve into this, I hope you vote in favor tonight, but there will be a town election, and for those of you who do vote in favor, we'll be counting on you to talk to your friends and neighbors. So in that regard, I would encourage you to look at some of the management letters that were provided by the town auditor and some of the recommendations that were provided by the Audit Committee that presents to this body once a year. So better and more robust audit responses, better audit recommendation implementation, and in a more timely manner, better coordination between payroll accounting and Treasury operations, as well as the HR function. Next, that a qualified CFO or Treasurer would improve financial management practices and discipline. And that happens because if you bring someone in who's got a depth of experience in these areas, cash management, investment management, that there's going to be a greater synergy that you achieve, and you do that much more effectively in a much shorter amount of time.
Mr. Walker, about three minutes left.
Okay. Increased and more consistent accountability across the financial management team with the Treasurer as a direct report, better and more effective capital planning, but again, as part of a team. And this one is probably one of the more important roles that the Treasurer places because with regard to capital planning, bonding, and the management of debt service, these are multimillion-dollar decisions. And if you've ever had a home mortgage, you understand the impact of better interest rates or more favorable interest rates versus not. So this individual is making decisions about when to go into the bond market and strategies for getting us the best interest rates. Better coordination and cooperation on midterm and long-term revenue strategies, and improved long-term financial planning and forecasting. I just want to highlight in that last one, one more homework item I would offer to you is to look at the S&amp;P Global Report just recently issued in terms of improving, once again, the town's AAA bond rating. And one of the things they cite is the experience of our Town Administrator and our Finance Director, Amy Dexter, as part of the reason that they feel that the town is well-positioned to continue the financial management successes that it's had.
About a minute, Mr. Walker.
Last, next to last. These are stakeholders that I talked about, members of the Audit Committee who work directly with the Treasurer at times, town auditors who work directly with the town auditor at times, Board of Selectmen who work directly with the town auditor at times, with the Treasurer at times, sorry, Town Administrator, Town Accountant who works directly, MPS Superintendent, Chair of the School Committee, Assistant Superintendent for Business who works directly with the Treasurer at times, Town Clerk, Warrant Committee Chair, Town Moderator. So quite a few people that we talked to, every single one said that they thought this would be an improvement to go to an appointed Treasurer. Last slide. So Town Administrator Milano complimented Mr. Fundling on the map that he created, but that's not the most important research he did. This is. He looked at, in the town archives, and determined how often the Treasurer is a contested election. The last two Treasurers served for a collective 42 years. There was never a contested election. So when you talk about accountability and transparency, right now, there is none. And when you talk about accountability, you get a lot more accountability if you're part of a senior management team where you're working together, where your activities are scrutinized, and where you're asked to cooperate on a daily basis.
Mr. Walker, if you could wrap up, please.
But more importantly, there's no accountability if you're not even in a contested election. So I would urge you all to vote in favor of this article. And lastly, I think the right thing to do for someone who has served the town in a distinguished manner for the last 14 years, I hope that you would join me in recognizing Mr. McAuliffe and the 14 years of service that he's provided us.
Yes, sir. Mr. Fahy, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Sean Fahy, Precinct 9, Member of the Planning Board. Mr. Walker just stole my thunder, so to speak. And regardless of your position on this particular article, the one thing that is certain is that Jim McAuliffe will end his service to the Town of Milton in a very, in the very near term. And as Mr. Walker had just said, I just felt it was appropriate for us as a board, I'm sorry, for us as a, as a body, and for our Select Board, our Warrant Committee, and School Committee, and Planning Board, just to recognize what Jim has done. He loves the Town of Milton. He's been here his entire life. I feel he's served the town very well with a level of commitment and service that we would expect from anybody that works for the town. I just felt it was appropriate to recognize Jim McAuliffe and extend our appreciation and gratitude for all he's done for the town. So that was it, Mr. Moderator. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Does anyone else wish to speak to this recommendation? Seeing none, we'll proceed to the electronic vote. If we could switch to the voting screen. All those in favor of the recommendation in Article 2, please signify by pressing 1. Those opposed, press 2. Those abstaining, please press nothing. If we could put up the counter. This requires a majority vote, by the way. We'll close the poll. The motion carries by a vote of 92% yes, 8% no, if we can put up the count. With 173 yeses and 15 no's, so the motion carries. Thank you. We'll proceed to Article 3. Recommended that the town vote to authorize the Select Board to acquire by purchase eminent domain or otherwise a portion of the property located at 930 Brook Road, Milton, Mass., Milton Assessors' Records Parcel IDF 1812, owned now or formerly by the Congregation of the Sisters of St. Joseph, containing 142,833 square feet, more or less substantially in accordance with the terms of a purchase and sale agreement between the town and the congregation of the Sisters of St. Joseph, and to authorize the Select Board to grant and accept all leases necessary to develop said portion of the property and to take all of the actions necessary to complete this acquisition. And that the town appropriate an amount to pay for the cost of this acquisition, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto. To meet this appropriation, the Treasurer with the approval of the Select Board is authorized to borrow said amount pursuant to MGL 44, Section 7.1, or pursuant to any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore. And that the Select Board is authorized to accept grants or gifts from any other public or private funding source relating to this appropriation, provided however that said appropriation is contingent upon passage of the voters in Milton of a referendum under Question, under Chapter 59, Section 2CK of the Mass General Law. question, question, under Chapter 59, Section 2 CK of the Mass General Laws, which exempts from the provisions of Proposition 2 and 1/2 so-called, the amount required to pay for the bond, or bonds issued for the purposes of this article. I'd like to first start by recognizing Chair Arthur Doyle's select board. Mr. Doyle, you're recognized?
Thank you again, Mr. Moderator. The select board would ask the moderator to please recognize Sean O'Rourke, Chair of the School Building Committee and Town Meeting Member from Precinct 8.
Thank you, sir. Mr. O'Rourke, you're recognized. We could put up the presentation for number three?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name's Sean O'Rourke, I'm the Chair of the Town School Building Committee, also a town meeting member of Precinct 8. I wanted to take a moment tonight to briefly update this body on, as it relates to this article. Can you get the next slide, please? The School Building Committee was made aware of the option to purchase Fontbon in October of last year. Immediately following that, myself, Director of Facilities, Bill Ritchie, and Glenn Pavlichuk toured the site to kind of make sure it was a viable option. Once we did that and walked through, we invited other School Building Committee members to, to participate and walk, walk it. Immediately after that, we worked with the select board, town council, to come up with an RFP for purchase of the land. That was in November. In December, Fontbon has, had responded with their response to our RFP on December 20th. Essentially, a week later, members Zulus, myself, and town administrator Nick Milano met with the realtor. We reviewed their, their response to us, and basically created a counteroffer that was submitted to them. That counteroffer was reviewed and rejected in January, on January 20th of this year. In addition to rejecting the counteroffer, Fontbon withdrew their offer to sell to us. You know, along with the work that went in with, you know, select board and town administrator, School Building Committee did additional work. We tried to figure out a program that would work with this facility, yet we went out and actually became working with a, with an architect to come up with a feasibility study to make sure there were no fatal flaws. So for lack of a better word, there was a lot of work and a lot of committees over the holidays, select board, town council, town administrator, and even the warrant committee in favor of this. Next slide, please. The response to the RFP that Fontbon gave, there were three stipulations as part of it. First was they wanted the ability to have six office spaces for a term of three years, and then with three one-year extensions on top of that. Similar came in with classrooms. They wanted to take three classrooms for a total of three years with three one-year extensions. And then finally, what they called the, the fields, which is essentially the grass area behind where library colleges, they wanted that, access to that in perpetuity. Next slide. Overall, the convent, not the high school, was what we were looking to purchase. It was approximately 45,000 square feet, and it sat on a little bit over three acres of land. The interior that you can see is essentially was like a dormitory. It had a central hallway with bedrooms that came off on, on each side. So as we looked at this, it basically required a lot of renovation that we needed to do. The renovation that we'd be doing is basically called a Level 3 alteration by the state building code. In doing so, it triggered a number of different things that we'd have to upgrade there. So those stipulations that they put in their offer of having space in there for three years, we could not allow that, because essentially it would be inhabitable as we did our renovations. So Galle Road, next slide, please. Thank you. So along that same timeline that we were doing, we were working in a parallel path with Galle Road. As everyone may be aware, we had, we had a, a option that we presented for, at Galle Road last year. Next slide, please. That option that we looked at was this, it basically utilized the majority of the conservation land that existed along Galle Road. The additional work that we did with BSC Engineering was to survey additional space and basically create a different parcel. Next slide. The parcel you see here is a realignment of Galle Road that's shown in red. That realignment allows us to merge a smaller portion of the parkland with a smaller portion of the conservation land. In doing so, next slide. In doing so, there are multiple things. The realignment of Galle Road, there's offsets now from our neighbors at Home Inc. Essentially, it equates to 100-foot boundary, 50 foot of conservation, and 50 foot of zoning. Along Blue Hills Parkway, we've pulled back 300 feet to save the ecological valuable portion of the site. And then further, at, at the upper right-hand corner of this, you'll see around Home Inc., we've left that entire portion as conservation land. In doing so, we're utilizing now, for conservation land on the site, a third of what we're using of the overall parcel. In regards to parks, we're only using 25%. So again, with our committee, this is kind of testament of us listening to our neighbors and reacting to some of their concerns. Next slide. Overall, as our proposed land swap goes forward, we're looking to transfer into conservation over 50 acres, while only taking out of conservation approximately 2.8. Next slide. And then in regards to Article 97, we'll be putting into Article 97 approximately 15 acres and pulling out approximately 2.8. Last slide. There'll be a number of questions, I'm sure. We'll be holding town meeting member forums over the coming months, informational, they'll allow people to, you know, question us back and forth, similar to what we did last year. So you'll, you'll be seeing more of those to come. With that, Ms. Moderator, I'd like to make a motion to refer this back, Article 3 back to the select board.
So just, we have a motion on the floor to refer Article 3 back to the select board for further study. Is there a second? With that, would anyone like to speak to the article to refer? Now, by the way, two points. This past June, I implemented a ad hoc policy on motions to refer to try to speed things along. That on just motions to refer, we'd limit our comments to three minutes, and everyone speaks once. And if you could, focus your thoughts on the motion to refer, because we have no other article before us about, we can't buy Fontbon, we don't have a land swap, they don't have the answers to all your questions, and we can, you can decide to choose the motion to refer or not, but a lot of in-depth questions on all the future is probably unproductive tonight, would be my suggestion. But with that, Ms. Ross Denny, by prior request, asked permission to speak to the body as a town meeting member under this school-related article. So Mam, you're recognized?
Thank you all for entertaining my conversation today. My comments are not related to the school committee, but I wanted to share something after being very encouraged by members of our community to do so. So first, I'd like to thank Moderator Hiss and Select Board Chair Doyle for their opening statements on decorum. It means a lot for those of us who are servicing, serving in public office to know that we have the support of the larger community in our efforts to do what's best for our town. For those who are not aware, the behavior they were alluding to has been happening for some time. This is not the first event. I can share from my personal story, which might be common for some of you, but when I decided to run for office, I got a call threatening my safety. I've had people come to my house after controversial votes to look at my security, and I've had members of my community, who I don't know, follow me to my car to question why I'm wearing a mask. And I say all this to say that we all know what intimidation looks like, we know what it sounds like. I'm sorry if you can't hear me. We all know what intimidation looks like, and we know what it sounds like, but now as a community, we have to say, it's not right. I don't think any one of us comes to these meetings and puts our best effort to upset people or to harm people. If you don't like our policies, or you don't like my policies, it's fair not to vote for me. But I don't think coming to my home, or following to my car, or threatening my safety, that's not what I'm doing this for. I'm doing this, I'm here for our town. And I ask, if you're with a neighbor when they're behaving this way, or if you know it's your neighbor, or your spouse, or your friend, please stop them and ask them to do better. I think we all deserve better than this, and I thank you for the time.
Does anyone else wish to speak to the motion to refer this article back to the select board? If so, please step down to the front, you'll be recognized. Seeing none, we'll, we'll go to an electronic vote, and this requires a majority vote. If we could put up the polling software. All those in favor of the motion to refer this back to the select board, please signify by pressing 1. Opposed, press 2. Abstained, press nothing. The motion carries with a positive vote of 95% and negative vote of 5%. If we could also put up the count. With 181, excuse me, 181 in favor and nine opposed. With that, that concludes our business. Two things, if you could remember, to drop your clickers off on the way out, and we'll check that in. Second, could I have a motion to dissolve?
No.
All, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. We are dissolved. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, we're done in an hour and a half.